I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. First item of business this evening is oral comments from the public. And remember that all comments will be directed to the city council. We may disagree, but we will be respectful of one another and personal attacks are unacceptable. And we have three minutes for public comment from each person. And is there anyone that wishes to have public comment this evening for items not on the agenda?
Thank you. Am I all set with the mic?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Allison Talbot. I am your local government relations representative for PG&E. I find myself looking at you two because you're the ones I don't know. I don't mean to ignore. I live just outside of Eureka, but the area I cover for PG&E is Humboldt and Mendocino Counties. I work with supervisors and council members and their direct staff to act as a liaison between the jurisdiction and PG&E and offer any help or assistance that I can. That could be constituent issues, city issues, regional issues. I think we saw each other in Willets most recently. So in Fortuna, as it happens, there is like extremely competent staff. Most of my interactions are at the staff level, but I wanted to remind the council that I am available if you need any assistance with any PG&E issues at all. The city manager has my cellphone and email. Your fellow council member who's not here this evening also has it. We work together day jobs. So yeah, that's really all. I just wanted to make you all aware that I'm here if you need me. And thank you for the opportunity to sort of reintroduce myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming by and for a chance for our new members to meet you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi. I'm Polly Kinsinger, and I apologize for my attire. I just got out of beds at the garden beds at 10th and Main. So I've been working on them all afternoon. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Jesse and his crew for helping us in removing material. And they're just super responsive. It's a great group of individuals. I think they're with Parks and Rec. I think I just really wanted to say thank you for their help. And it's really fun to continue to make Fortuna look pretty. And I'm also interested in if anyone's looking for community support for being a part of... I think there's an idea that you want to rebrand Fortuna or try to bring in new business or new blood or try to do something like that. I'd love to be a participant. I live here in Fortuna and I would volunteer my time. So anyway, hope you can go and check out the beds on Main Street.
Thank you. Thank you for the amazing job you all do on those. We appreciate it. Any other public comment this evening? Well, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on now to our consent calendar. We have items A through R. Quite the consent calendar this evening. We have the city council minutes from May 1st, May 5th, and the May 5th regular meeting, administrative and all the monthly reports for all the departments, community development, finance, Parks and Rec, police, Public Works, our report of dispersments, approval of a contract with GR Sundberg for concrete maintenance and a contract with Mercer Frazier for street paving, contract with Taylor Construction for street striping, approve a supplemental budget request for vehicles, approve of the June 29th, 2025 to June 30th memorandum of understanding, June 30th of '27. Establish and authorize supplemental compensation for unrepresented management confidential employees. Approve amendments to the Fortuna STEP policy and disability insurance, paid family leave integration, and authorize the city manager to award the wastewater treatment plant clarifier recoding project. Would anybody like to pull anything? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on these items? See none. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Oh, nay. Is there anything you want to pull?
Not necessarily. I don't want to hold anything up since I'm new to the council and, you know, just going with my concern of spending so much money on outside contractors, consultants, and the city's need for more staff and payroll. I just am fearful and maybe it may not be the case on these specific instances, but just in general in the long term, that I'd like to see the city start doing more stuff in-house. You know, when I see minor striping or minor, you know, items, I just would like to, you know, get my own confidence that these are items the city just cannot do themselves.
Okay. Well, we too much to go into on this.
Like I said, I don't want to hold it up.
All right. So we come now to our business items. And for expediency sake, we would like, we will be moving item D to first in line ahead of A. So our first item is Kiwanis Club of Riadelle and Scotia Bingo permit application. Staff report?
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm presenting the request from the Kiwanis Club of Riadelle, Scotia. They're seeking a permit to operate a charitable bingo games at the River Lodge Conference as a part of their annual fundraiser. As you know, the Fortuna Municipal Code, specifically Chapter 5.16, which references the California Penal Code that supports this, does allow for charitable bingo games, provided that the organization obtains the proper permit. At this time, no such permit has been issued for this activity. Dana Webb, who's the chairperson of their bingo event, worked with city staff on an application and was, that was provided to the city manager, myself, as police chief, and it has been reviewed. The application is complete and meets the requirements of the municipal code. To summarize the key details, the event will be organized and operated by Kiwanis Club Riadelle, Scotia. The location will be the River Lodge located at 1800 Riverwalk Drive. Bingo games will take place only between 6:00 PM and 8:30 PM. Prizes will not exceed $250 in value. All proceeds will be donated to benefit local children, supporting various school-related needs. Under the municipal code, the chief of police has the authority to both inspect both the event site and any records or special accounts related to bingo operations. These inspections can be done when deemed appropriate to ensure full compliance with the city, state, and federal laws. It's also worth noting that this is only the second formal request received for a bingo permit through the city. As such, there's no current established fee for, in the fee schedule for this activity. At this time, staff is not recommending any fee for this application. Any future applicants will have, be required to follow the same permit process, come before council for approval. The proposed permit duration for this is three years. And city council may add any conditions or restrictions deemed necessary to ensure the compliance with the code. Staff does not have any additional conditions or restrictions that we're recommending at this time. In terms of physical impact, the primary cost is our staff time, which has been minimal at this point, both in reviewing the application and conducting periodic compliance checks over the duration of the permit, if deemed necessary. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And a complete copy of the application, the relevant code section, is provided with the staff report. And additionally, I would like to report, point out there, I do have an error in my staff report. Under staff recommendations, it says Fortuna Senior Center. That comes from the only other applicant that has applied in the past. So apologize for that error. It is actually Kiwanis Club of Riadelle, Scotia.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff regarding this?
I have a quick question, just out of curiosity. Does it matter whether it's bingo for prizes or bingo for cash?
I do not believe so. I think it's the $250 in value. That's what our municipal code has in place currently. The California Penal Code does allow for a larger sum, but currently we are, follow the most stringent thing, which is our municipal code.
But that's not what I'm saying, the value. I'm saying if they're having bingo, they need to permit whether they're just giving out prizes or...
Yes, yes, because it still is, falls under the gambling and it's the value of the prizes. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have another question. So the permit will be for three years and they're only scheduled to do it once a year?
Yes, it is our belief that this is going to be an annual fundraiser. This is something that they have conducted in a prior year outside of the city of Fortuna. And we're happy to have the business at the Fortuna River Lodge and in town.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this now and if anyone wants to speak to this issue? Not, nothing at this time.
I make a motion to approve the bingo permit for the Kiwanis Club of Riadelle in Scotia.
I second that.
So we have a motion and a second. It is a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? None. So, thank you. And we will go back to item A, which is Revenue Generation Ad Hoc Committee Update. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and councilmembers. Hold on. I am just trying to put this in preview mode. All right. So let's review part of the reason that we are here. On April 21st, we held a, your council held a meeting and there was a report that covered a number of topics such as budget outlook and turnover in the city of Fortuna. And so Fortuna has been experiencing limited revenue growth and rising costs. The estimated general fund revenue for the upcoming fiscal year is a little over 8 million. That was 2% growth over fiscal year '24, '25. It was also a decline of 31,500 in sales tax revenue. Estimated general fund expenses for fiscal year '25, '26 are 8.3 million. And that's an increase of 385,000. And expenses are outpacing revenue by 235,000. The state of the budget and limited revenue growth have created constricted investment in vital services such as public safety. And it's seen by the fact that the city was unable to invest in a COLA for the upcoming fiscal years for staff and instead offered one-time dollars using the city's savings. Limited investment also contributes to an increase in citywide turnover because wages are not competitive with other jurisdictions or other agencies. And we'll talk about turnover in just a second. And it's important to look at turnover in comparison with other local agencies. As you can see on the slide, the city of Eureka and Arcata pay between 27% to 25% more for a police officer or we're 27% to 25% below. We are 28% to 20% lower for a police sergeant, 37% to 30% below for a building official, 24% to 12% lower for a utility worker, too, and 18% to 11% lower for a treatment plant operator. The city of Riadelle's, the city of Riadelle salaries are currently competitive with Fortuna and the competitive range is around 10%. That's a nationwide standard. So recruitment and retention of talented public sector staff remains a critical need and challenge for the city. Vacancies for many positions in the public sector remain challenging to fill, particularly for licensed professionals such as building inspector, building official, also for public safety positions. So we've seen an increase in turnover. We are estimating that at the end of fiscal year, we will lose 25 full-time staff or 30% in 28 part-time staff, which is a total turnover percentage of almost 50%. Turnover in just full-time positions, again, is going to, not hopefully, but is definitely looking like we will hit our target of 30%, which was just an estimate unfortunately. We did receive a resignation this morning of a very key full-time employee who will be leaving the agency and is partially leaving for more money. But more to the point, turnover has been trending upward in recent years. So there's costly impacts to turnover. It's costly to hire. There's recruiting. There's onboarding. There's training. There's a loss of expertise. There's decreased productivity. There's morale issues for the remaining staff who have to pick up for those vacant positions and do those job duties. There's also service disruptions. So that led to the creation of the Revenue Generation Ad Hoc Committee on April 21st. And your council appointed Mayor Johnson and Mayor Pro Tem Trent. And the ad hoc committee first reviewed one of the revenue generation options, which is basically to reduce general fund allocations in one department to provide, in many departments actually, to provide salary increases across the organization. So one of the first things that the ad hoc looked at was a 20% decrease or a 20% pay increase across the city organization would cost about $1 million to the general fund. And so that's comprised of 190,000 in benefits and 810,000 in salaries. And so what does that look like if we were to cut that amount? That would mean that there would be no paid museum services. The River Lodge would need to be sold. All recreation programs to the tune of $240,000 would need to be cut. The parks maintenance staff would need to be cut by 50% or 280,000. And street maintenance staff would be cut by 50%. That equals $1 million in cuts. And so what this also means is 15.28 FTE would need to be laid off or 18.9% of the city's workforce. So again, these layoffs would mean that there, it would be a significant impact to the Parks and Recreation Department in particular. There would be no evening or weekend skate services, no youth break camps. Maintenance of park grounds would be reduced and reduced availability on weekends to assist with events. There would also be no garbage pickup or restroom cleanup at times as well. Measure E does fund some of the Parks and Recreation staff. And so there would still be some opportunities to reserve fields and facilities, but there would be, again, limited recreation opportunities. Layoffs to street maintenance would also impact services. Two and a half street maintenance workers would be laid off and this would obviously severely impact the maintenance of streets. The ad hoc committee requested that staff look at another scenario where all departments were asked to cut the budget by 20% in order to support investment in vital services. And that includes cutting public safety. And so that looks like also no paid services for a museum coordinator. It means cutting police patrol staff or three FTEs for a total of 450,000. That's a 33% cut to the police department. It means reducing recreation programs by 83% or 200,000. Cutting parks maintenance staff by 25% or 140,000. And then cutting street maintenance staff by 25% or 100,000. So the loss of three police officers would reduce shift coverage and increase officer safety risks. It would drive up overtime demands and add to already high workloads, further straining morale and increasing the risk of burnout. In addition, officers would no longer be able to respond to medical aid calls. Medical aid calls are not a legal requirement of the police department. They are a legal requirement of ambulance service. And other police departments in the area do not respond to medical aid calls, but the city of Fortuna still does respond. So this second scenario includes an 83% reduction to recreation programs. And again, that would significantly devastate the ability for Parks and Recreation to provide recreation services. This scenario would require laying off 11.58 FTEs or 14.3% of staff. The Finance Department and Community Development Department are not in this scenario because they are already very short-staffed and would likely be very incapacitated and unable to perform their essential functions like the audit requirement and state regulations for the general plan and housing element and all of that stuff that the state does require for us to do. And investing in vital services by reducing other general fund services at this point in time does not appear to be practical for the long-term viability and operations of the city. And therefore, the ad hoc committee, they further discussed a sales tax measure. The ad hoc committee discussed both a general and a specific sales tax measure. As a reminder, a general sales tax measure requires a simple majority of 50% plus one and is similar to Measure E and the failed Measure P. A 3/4% sales tax would generate approximately 1.8 million. Just for a local agency comparison, Eureka's sales tax is 10 1/4, as is Arcata, and Fortuna's is at 9 1/2%. Another sales tax option is a dedicated sales tax option, which requires a 2/3 majority or 66%. It does provide better protection for voters, particularly those who may be interested in a dedicated sales tax measure for public safety services. So during this ad hoc meeting, there was some good discussion around a number of questions. For example, which tax to pursue? Would it, is there interest in a specific sales tax measure? Is there interest in a general tax measure? Does the city include a sunset date versus no sunset date in the sales tax measure? Does the city address the expiration date of Measure E? That expires in 2033 in a second ballot measure? And is the community even willing to support investment in vital services? And how do we get the answers to these questions? There's one pathway to do this and that starts with public opinion research. Public opinion research can be done by contracting with an experienced agency that does public opinion research. Two proposals from public opinion research agencies were reviewed at the ad hoc committee. And myself and the finance director also met with EMC Research to further gauge whether public opinion research could help us get answers to our questions. And the answer is yes. We had a very frank conversation about all of the things that we were curious about and what the ad hoc had asked about in particular. And it's important to note that public opinion research is important for understanding the community's attitudes and preferences. And it helps in your council be informed on policy decisions. Basically, what is, what is the community willing to do? Public opinion research also helps elected officials understand the needs and concerns of their constituents. And it also can reveal a shift in public attitudes over time. It's a crucial tool for understanding the needs and priorities of the city's residents. And again, it informs policy decisions such as whether to place a sales tax measure on the ballot. And therefore, the ad hoc and staff recommends that the city council take the following action to approve 37,500 to be included in the fiscal year '25, '26 budget for public opinion research to gauge the feasibility of and inform a public, a potential sales tax measure in November 2026 with EMC Research and Team Civic X and authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for these services. And that concludes the staff report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Pretty dire. Any comment, questions? Questions for?
Do we have any like metrics, like quality of life metrics that, you know, would result from making some of those severe cutbacks that you had outlined? So for instance, if the police department stops making medical service calls, you know, how many extra people are going to die basically in a year? You know, is there some, is that even something that can be estimated?
That's a very difficult thing to estimate, but in general, I can speak to your question. When we read the staff report and we had these discussions internally, you know, we looked at how do we accomplish this if this is a scenario that we need to look at? It would result in severe quality of life issues. We'd have to make massive cuts to the services that we provide. We would look at things such as response to cold calls versus in-progress calls. So when you have something going on at your home and you need the police, you call. If it was in progress at that moment, of course, we would respond out there and try to keep the peace. If you had a civil dispute, if you had something that was a cold call, something, say somebody stole your vehicle, it could result in online reporting where we send you the information. And then when a detective or an officer or somebody can get out and follow up at a later date and time, they do that, that would severely reduce our ability to successfully investigate and solve these crimes. Fortuna Police Department has a very good record of solving crimes and staying on top of things and keeping the quality of life very high in Fortuna. And I'm afraid that it would be impacted. Not only that, your summer events would be impacted. We would have to take a hard look at how much we engage and assist in those summer events, which really bring a lot of financial support to the city as well. So I'm concerned.
Any other?
I just have a comment that understanding the budget the way that it is, I don't see myself agreeing with the spending $37,000 to get an opinion on the community when the community understands that the other option to cut essential services will be detrimental to the community. Yes, I think that it's important to understand what they feel, but it's more important to educate them on the other option, which is the services that we will be looking to cut if we do not pass this tax measure.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
So one of the things about public opinion research is they're really testing the community's level of support for a sales tax measure. They are also testing what, what has support and what, and what has support is what should be included in the ballot measure. And I'm going to give you an example of why this is, this is important. The city of Sonoma recently thought they were going to do a sales tax measure on parks and recreation. And when they went out and did their polling, they found that they had almost no support for a sales tax measure on parks and recreation. However, they did have a sale, they did have support for public safety services. And so that really helped inform the council on how to shape the ballot measure language. And it, and it really clued in the council on what was very important to the community. So it really tests the level of support that there is for something like this. And do I think the community wants to see this level of reduction in services? No. It would be helpful to better understand whether they support parks and recreation. Some of the feedback I received on Measure P was that they didn't like that it wasn't a dedicated sales tax to public safety and that they didn't really want to support parks with an additional tax. And so I think that information is really important for your council to have.
Any other?
I'm going to agree with Carlos's. I also don't want more consultants. I think if we decide that us, we want to try again, I think we should just try again and focus on our messaging better. But I don't know. But again, I'm still, I'm still, there's a steep learning curve that I'm still getting up to speed on. So, right.
May I also add some items of other note? So one of the things that happened today is that I was in touch with your former public opinion research firm from two thousand and fourteen, Measure V, that did fail. And one of the things that I found out is that language was tested, and then the council modified the ballot measure language and included rodeo and auto expo in that ballot measure language, and that language was not tested. And so in an exchange with the former polling firm, when you don't test the language, you don't really understand where the level of support is for anything that's included in that ballot measure. And so it is really important to understand what level of support exists in the community.
I have some more questions. I will say that this is kind of scary. Thirty-seven thousand dollars is a lot of money, but I think it's worth the risk to invest that to hopefully get everything in line to get our tax measure passed. We need to see whether it's going to be, you know, people want a specific public safety tax, but the last tax measure, when I was talking to people, that's what they wanted. So we need to find out whether it's going to be a specific tax or a general tax. So polling will help give us those ideas to get everything in line to give the community what they want, what they need. We also need to get the word out. They need to see this. They need to see what we just saw here on what it'll look like if we don't get money. They don't understand that the last election, everybody in the county's tax measure passed except Fortuna's. So they all have the money to pay those officers, to pay those people what they deserve, and we don't. We are losing our people to them. We are going to lose most of our city employees and lose a lot of our services if we can't pay them. There are people out there that don't think they deserve anything, but they do. We have good employees, and we want to keep our employees. So I do think it's important to invest this amount to see how we need to do this. We have to go out for a tax measure. We don't have a choice. We have to do it. And so we need the best wording, the best, we need to know what everybody wants, and that's what we need to go out for. So I don't like spending the money, but I feel like sometimes you've got to spend it to get it. So that's how I feel on it.
We do need to craft the language to capture what the residents of Fortuna want, and the only way to know that is to ask them. And we don't have the ability to ask the number of people in a sample. It may be that people want a dedicated public safety tax, and that's what they'll vote for. Maybe that they want a general tax, and that's what they'll vote for. But at this point in time, we don't know. I agree that it's money, thirty-seven thousand dollars is money, but it's better spent being ready for the ballot. And then we still have personal appearances, knocking on doors, talking to civic groups and to special event places. And so there's a lot of work ahead, but at least we'll be able to focus on getting done what needs to be done and not expending energy for something that the people of Fortuna don't want. So that's my take.
We're going to have to do a lot of public engaging on this, letting the community know how bad off the city's finances are and what's going to happen if we don't get something passed. So that's another thing that's important in all of this. So that's all.
What about some of the other options that were included? I mean, would it be worth considering making some cutbacks sooner, like selling the River Lodge? I mean, if it's a drain on the city's, you know, funding every year, it kind of makes sense that it might make sense that it would be better suited in the hands of a private group, you know, and maybe generate a little revenue in the sale of it.
So that's definitely an option that your council can consider, and you would need to direct your staff, me and Aaron, to bring back a cut option like that. That can be done. I do think, I do want to caution you slightly that the River Lodge does have a nexus to transient occupancy tax, and so we would want to look at that a little bit more carefully in an upcoming staff report. It's also something the ad hoc can look at. The ad hoc is not done meeting yet. The ad hoc does have a number of other revenue generation options to look at. And in addition, if your council does approve a public opinion research, the ad hoc will need to work with that firm on the questions that will be posed to voters in the community. So that can happen. Your council needs to direct us, and there's a number of steps we'd need to take in order to make that happen.
Is there any public comment on this item? I guess.
I'd like to make a comment under public comment. You know, I know it's a tough decision, you know, but when looking at what we have in our reserve fund and looking out at the employees and the people that work with every day, I mean, you're showing, taking this option is showing the employees that you're investing in an option that is not cuts, that is not them losing the assistance and the help they need. You're showing them that, hey, we're willing, as a council, to do everything we can to step up, even if it costs us a little bit of money, to try to make this the most successful thing we can do. I'd just like you to consider that.
Mayor Johnson. Go ahead, Supervisor Bushnell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I urge the council to approve the contract to get the polling information. It's imperative that you do this for your town. This work cannot be done by you five or by staff, and it really is essential. Our Measure O that just passed, which is the transit and road tax, we would not have gotten that without that information. We were going in a totally different direction before the polling went out. Also, I want to say that selling the River Lodge, that is an income generator for you guys, and it's one-time monies that you would get from selling it. That does not cure your problem. Your problem is years and years of needing to have income come in. A one-time sell of a building that you can generate funds from is not going to fix your guys' solutions. I really, really urge the council to do this polling. It's super important to get a tax measure passed, which, as Amy's presentation, you guys need that. That is money consistently coming in for long term. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. And I think we had someone here in the audience.
Hello, I am Orville Garrison. I am a resident of Fortuna. I do admit that I was not able to attend the first council meeting in May because of another professional obligation. But I am interested, first off, I support the concept of a polling to find out what it is citizens of Fortuna really do want and what their priorities are. But what I'm sensing from sitting in the audience tonight is that there was some discussion about priorities for revenue generation that were coming out of an ad hoc committee. And I'm interested in knowing how was the ad hoc committee assembled and who is or was the ad hoc committee? Because I believe there are probably other citizens of Fortuna out there like me who are wondering who these mysterious and undefined power brokers are who are making these decisions and presenting these proposals to the council. The fact that many of us don't know that, I think, is reflective of the fact that voters can sometimes be reluctant to vote for measures which the council would be supporting. Thank you.
Would you address that?
Mayor Johnson, I'd be happy to address that. An ad hoc committee is comprised of two members of the city council, and that is yourself and Mayor Protem Trent. The ad hoc also includes myself, the finance director, members of the Fortuna Police Association, and members of the Fortuna Employee Association, as well as unrepresented employees, because they are very impacted by the lack of investment in vital services. And it should be noted that an ad hoc is a very appropriate way to go about gathering information and then reporting back. And that's exactly what is happening tonight. We had a meeting, we reviewed some things, and now here we are presenting that information back to the full city council and the public. And once the city council makes a final determination on revenue generation options, excuse me, the ad hoc will be disbanded. It is only to look at the revenue generation options and then come back to the city council, the full city council, and share those options, and your council gets to make decisions at that point.
Thank you.
Was taking money from the reserve funds an option considered?
So that option will be considered from, the ad hoc will consider that option. Historically, this city council has not liked using reserve funds for ongoing expenses. And so that's what we're really looking at right now, is we don't have enough revenue to support ongoing raises or supporting ongoing vital services. And so it does become tricky to use reserves for ongoing expenses. I don't recommend deficit spending unless it's a crisis.
Reserves and selling property are one-time monies that eventually run out when you've got, especially for Purge, you've got thirty years of obligations to, so it's not a good thing, and you don't eat your seed potatoes.
Yep. And also, just to clarify regarding the River Lodge, you know, my curiosity on that was under the assumption that it costs the city money each year, not generates money. Can you or Aaron speak to?
Yeah, we can speak to that. It does cost the city money. The general fund does have to contribute dollars to the maintenance and operation of the River Lodge. It is not a self-sustaining entity at this point in time. I do hope that at one point in the future, it will be. But the River Lodge, there is a nexus between the River Lodge and occupancy in the motels in the Riverwalk area. So that should be considered in any future decision-making.
Is there any other public comment?
I find it kind of interesting that I walked into this meeting just wanting to talk about Jesse and his crew, and I walked into something that might influence them. And so I thought I would add my two cents, since I'm here. I agree with the need for understanding what the public wants. I think it would be helpful if there were members of the public on your ad hoc committee, perhaps, who have a feeling of what people think in the background. As I watched the last measure fail, there was a lot of social media against it, and that seemed to get a lot of momentum instead of the positive side. There were people trying to plug the good information, but the negative was so strong. I was in favor of it, but it didn't pass. So I think in the same regard, as you're talking about developing income for the city, there's the idea, as I spoke earlier, about creating a new idea of what we're trying to draw to our city for people who travel here. And getting full use out of the River Lodge is another way of generating income. So I think it's a big, huge package, and I like the idea of having a group tell us what direction we should be going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Justin Primofori, Fortuna Police Employees Association, I can speak on behalf of the entire Fortuna Police Employees Association and say that we fully support the polling. I know it's an initial upfront cost, but if we do do a tax measure, advertising and all that other stuff is going to cost money as well. So long-term, if you spend a little bit more money upfront to identify what we need to be advertising and what the citizens want, I think that's a very fiscally responsible thing to do versus just going off on a whim and saying, well, this is what we think the community wants, and this is what we're going to put out there. Obviously, we're going to be, we're going to support it, and we're going to be the ones out knocking on the doors, handing out flyers, talking to people, telling them what it means. And also, I don't know about the numbers when it comes to the finances, but I would suspect that there's probably enough salary savings to cover that cost this year because we've been working so short. And the path that we are on is not sustainable for our association. You know, our guys are, guys and gals are working countless hours to make sure that the shifts are filled. And we've been given this carrot, this continuous carrot put out in front of us, saying, you know, we got Measure P, that's going to help, and we got this, and we have that. And we've always asked more and more and more of our people with less. And at some point, that's going to hit a crossroads, and people are just going to leave. They're going to go to other organizations where they don't have to work overtime. They can work their forty-hour shift, and they go home, and they don't have to worry about it. We provide a very high level of service to the citizens of this community. Our response times are way quicker than most other agencies, and people become accustomed to that. And, you know, that's not going to be able to happen if we don't have some sort of change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I don't see anything online. Where are we at now? Motion?
I make a motion to approve thirty-seven thousand five hundred to be included in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget for public opinion research to gauge the feasibility of and inform a potential sales tax measure in November twenty twenty-six, with EMC Research Team, CivX, and authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement to these services.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. It's a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three to one passes.
And I also just want to clarify my own personal opinion. I am all for raising employee salaries. I think that's definitely seriously needed. I'm also not opposed to the sales tax measure. I'm just skeptical of an outside consultant being the highest likely path of success.
Okay. Yes.
I just want to ask, right there in front, your metallic gold thing is hitting the light, and it's like a mirror of a light right into my eyes. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And thank you all for weighing in on this. Next item for business is a public hearing for the adoption of rates and fees for city services, Resolution twenty-two-five-seventeen.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So staff presented the proposed fee schedule for discussion and to answer questions with the city council at a special workshop on May first. As discussed, the fees were evaluated based on the cost to provide the services, as well as local agency comparisons. And so the purpose of this public hearing is to adopt the proposed fees, as we're discussed as part of that special workshop. And for transparency and clarity, the adopted fees from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the proposed changes to those fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five fees, and the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six fees are all presented in the council packet. I'm not going to go through I'm not going to go through all of them, since we went through them at the special workshop, but if there's any outstanding questions, staff are happy to answer those. And otherwise, I'll turn it over to, back to the council.
All right. Is there any questions or comments for?
I asked a bunch of questions earlier, but the one thing I would like to actually have added in here is on the, the recreation holiday weeks. There's only one price in there. It's $1.40 for the whole week. And could it also be added in there, but will be prorated for holidays, because we don't charge for holidays in there? So it makes it a little more clear.
Yes, if you want to add that as part of the motion, we can clarify that as part of the language in the fee schedule.
Thank you. I know we understand it, but two councils away from us may not.
Well, I have a question. I've been getting some feedback from public about, and this is something that Sherri would know, she's looking at me like you're looking right at me, something that the community development director, the GoGov or GovOnline, pardon? OpenGov. It has, I've heard from park users, and I've heard from community development plan people, users, and it's been a hit and miss, more miss than hit, and I just wondered if there's any relief on the horizon.
So, good evening. I'm Sherri Mead, your community development director. I believe parks is on a totally different system. However, I can speak to OpenGov being frustrating for users and for staff. We had a scheduled meeting with OpenGov to actually go through some of the issues that I have found. They ended up being a no-show for that, so we have now tried to reschedule. And if you have any folks that want to send me what their particular frustrations are, that would be great, so I can address them, because what I am reaching out to them about are issues that I'm seeing with like workflow and timing and things like that. But I would love to address any and all issues. Needless to say, I wasn't part of the decision-making to go with this software, but here we are, and so we are going to try to make the best of it that we can. And I, like I said, I'm happy to really talk to anybody about specific things, so that we can try to make it as user-friendly as possible.
Great, thank you. Those were a couple of the things that I had. Any other, any public comment on this item? Fee schedule? Whether it's administrative, parks, community development? I've seen none.
Did everybody else get the resolution downloaded? I don't have it in my... I wasn't able to read the resolution, because I don't have it. It's, doesn't come up on my iPad.
When comes up this draft?
Yeah, the, it's, it's not on our iPads. Do you want me to print copies for you right now? Uh, no.
I think there's been some web issues, because all weekend long, I tried to get the packet downloaded, and I could only get it from the invitation from...
So we have, we have introduced our new website, and it does require you to do some changes in your search engine, like clearing your cache, because it will try to grab the old website links. That could be the problem, so when that happens, the easiest thing to do is use the link in the email that's being sent out, because it's going to direct you to the right location.
All right. Thank you.
And my apologies for that.
It's tech. So, no public comment. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-17, and read by title only.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second.
Resolution 2025-17, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, establishing a schedule of fees and charges for administrative, building, community development, parks and recreation, police, River Lodge, transit, and water and wastewater within the city of Fortuna for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Mayor Protem Trent? Yes. Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. We come to item C, adult sports team processing fee.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. Kalen Stainbrook, interim Parks and Recreation Director. So one of the fees that were just approved for the upcoming fiscal year was the adult sports team processing fee, and I have it before you now, so that we can implement it a little early, as our softball season is going to be commencing very shortly. We actually have the mandatory managers meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the rec hall, if anybody's interested. Otherwise, the season starts typically the Monday after Father's Day, which I believe is June 16th this year. So we are trying to get this fee moved, so that we can have a more smooth sailing registration process, especially since we are short-staffed in the office currently. So the fee that I'm proposing is a $100 flat fee per team, processing fee, and that's going to replace the individual players fee that we've had historically. So historically, each resident of Fortuna that wants to participate comes in and pays $5. Each non-resident would come in and pay $10. So that is, let's see, for the 2025 Adult Basketball League, that was 173 individuals processing these individual fees through the office, which is pretty time-consuming for our staff. So to make it a little more streamlined, we'd like to go ahead and replace that with just the lump sum for the team and apply those to the league fees.
Any questions for Kalen on this item? So this is not a new fee, it's a new way of collecting the same amount and getting it to, back to the park without having 170 single transactions.
Correct. With Aaron's help, we were able to determine that last year, approximately two-thirds of the participants were non-residents, and so it came out to be roughly the same amount on average. It would be $100 per team.
All right. Well, any public comment on this item? See none. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt $100 adult sports team processing fee to replace individual players fee and including each team's league fee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Luke.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And, thank you. Our last item, I bet Councilmember Stevens has been waiting for this. City council appointments to various boards and commissions. A staff report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Siana Emmons, city clerk. This next item is the appointment of city council members to outside agencies. As a reminder, council members may be appointed to outside agencies, boards, and commissions. Appointments are typically made during election years, at the last meeting of the year, the first meeting of the new year, after discussion and approval by the mayor. Due to the transition on our council, there are a couple of vacancies on seats and alternate seats on various boards and commissions. Attachment A, which was provided with your staff report, shows what the open vacancies are, and this item is the opportunity for your council to discuss current appointments and vacancies, including any changes that you would want to make. And with that, staff is recommending you review and select the appointments, then make a motion to approve by voice vote. So if you would turn to your attachment, if it's available, we can go through, right now, what is currently vacant, to see if potentially a council member that is not filling multiple positions would like to take one up. The first one is for HCOG, or the Humboldt County Association of Governments, and it's an alternate seat. Do you want to go through each one, or do you want to see if there's any takers? We want to, we can leave the alternate seats vacant also. It's not preferable, but we could do that. So if there's no interest, let me go through the vacant ones, and then we can see if there's any interest here. We also have REDEC, or the Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation, has a vacancy on its main board member seat. We also have the City of Fortuna Historical Commission, the alternate seat is vacant. And then the last one is RCEA, or Redwood Coast Energy Authority. It's also an alternate seat.
Yeah, and I don't mind volunteering for some. Mike, what, what does the HCOG involve as far as hours of your time?
Sometimes they've got a pretty hefty staff report. It handles the transportation and transit dollars, as well as the regional housing numbers, and administers a couple of regional grants through HCOG for housing-related matters and zoning, not zoning, but regulatory matters. And I've been working with HCOG since about 2014, 13, somewhere's in there. So, but yeah, it doesn't take a lot of time, but it uses a lot of acronyms, because of the way, the funds it handles.
And Mike Johnson hardly ever misses a meeting.
Yep.
Good point.
That's true. I don't.
Well, I have a personal interest in affordable housing in Fortuna, so I mean, that might be something I'd be interested in. I mean, I would also potentially be interested in the RRD-C, as far as economic development. I don't know, Carlos, if you have, you know, any interest in throwing your hat?
I already have two, and, but no, you, you can go ahead and take that, RRD-C.
Okay, well, anyway, yeah, I, I, I would be willing to volunteer for the Humboldt County Association of Governments and the Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation. I'm maybe not as interested in the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, as far as just my available time and interests.
And I can take the Historical Commission, alternate.
Okay. I will warn you that that's another one I rarely miss a meeting.
Bummer.
But that leaves you time for RCEA.
Yep.
I'm not taking anymore. I already have all of these, plus I have a whole lot from League of California Cities.
Okay, maybe we can leave the RCEA alternate seat vacant. I can check with Councilmember Conley to see if he's available to act as the alternate, and to move this forward, you can make a motion to approve the recommendations for the appointments.
I make that motion.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. I believe that brings us now to the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. The upcoming council meetings are scheduled for June 2nd and 16th at 6:00 PM. The upcoming planning commission meeting dates are May 27th and June 10th at 6:00 PM. The next Measure E meeting is September 16th at 5:30 PM. The Roner Community Recreation and Park District, next meeting is June 4th at 2:30 PM, and July 2nd at 2:30 PM. And Fbid, the next meeting, is July 22nd at 8:30 AM, and October 28th at 8:30 AM. So some of the things that we've been working on, myself and the Human Resources Director or...
Can I, can I just interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
Just back up, I have a question about the planning commission. Is it customary or for council members to attend planning commission meetings? I mean...
You could attend as an audience member.
Okay.
Is that, is, you can attend as an audience member.
Okay, thanks.
So as I was saying, actually, I, Siana wears a number of hats in this organization, and really, she was attending the fast pitch meeting as our risk manager, with myself and our interim Parks and Recreation Director, and we've been working out an MOU for field services. Kalen's been doing a lot of heavy lifting, and so thank you to her for that. Still working with local jurisdictions on recology negotiations, and I am pleased, at this point in time, those negotiations are progressing nicely. We did hold interviews for Public Works Director. We held a city council orientation for our two newest council members. I attended a tourism and marketing meeting, and then I also had the privilege of attending Talk Shop, and that includes my staff report.
Okay. Any questions for? All right. Is there any future agenda items? Not yet.
I think, I mean, there are a couple items I wouldn't mind just having as a discussion item. One would be just the economics of the River Lodge. I'd like to learn more about that, you know, how much it actually costs the city on an annual basis. And I wonder if it would be worthwhile to, you know, have some more conversation about some sort of cannabis ordinance. I think we had a lot of, you know, public input at the prior meeting that was, you know, tended to sound negative, but I've heard of a lot from other constituents that they think what the potential revenue would be worth looking into. So I would be interested in getting, trying to figure out how to get more kind of public feedback, you know, and just keep, you know, keep that as a potential discussion.
Sure, so we can definitely bring an item back on the economics of the River Lodge, and the cannabis, the cannabis did not die. There's going to be public education and outreach, and so that is in progress. Likely, there will be some sort of public meeting in, in the fall, talking about business license types, zoning. There's a lot of options that surround cannabis, so there'll be education that is coming your way. So that's, that is, that is still on the docket.
Okay. Okay, any other future agenda items? Well, that brings us to council reports and comments. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes, I met with RREDC, no, RCEA staff, and got introduced myself to them. Our, my first official meeting with them is going to be on Thursday, so I'll bring more at the next meeting.
Councilmember Stevens, you're new.
Yeah, no, nothing new to report.
And Mayor Protem Trent?
I had a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, and I let Kalen know a few of the things that were happening with that, one of them being a big expo they're doing here. We're hosting quite a few transit agencies, so there'll be quite a few people up there, and there'll be a lot of good classes. And he almost has that schedule ready, so I'll get you that schedule, so you can see if any of those classes interest you. And so, oh, we talked a little bit about Fairbox, which I have some ideas on that for you, too. And that's pretty much all I have to report from my committees.
Okay. Now, I had a HCOG meeting last week, and we approved our budget for the year. It's called the Overall Work Program, but it's basically our budget. It shows what we're working on, and how we're going to do it, and the funds for that. And it, ironically, it's probably a little bit harder to pass than the budget for the city of Fortuna, because it has to go back to Caltrans for review at least twice, and then be finally voted on by the board. We selected a consultant for a regional grant for hydrogen fueling stations. Recently, HTA has purchased hydrogen buses, because the regular buses consume a lot of diesel fuel getting up to Willow Creek and up to... a lot of diesel fuel getting up to, um, Willow Creek and up that corridor of two ninety-nine. And we, they wanted to get something that was much more smog-friendly, shall we say? And so they purchased a, a hydrogen bus, and it has performed so well that they've actually ordered a few more. I can't remember the exact number. And they are setting up a fueling site for the transit company. But over on the I-five corridor, uh, they, it also was part of this, it was the North State Superregion that goes over into Shasta and Siskiyou, Tahama County areas. And so they're looking at citing that because it's not a static thing like a transit where it comes back to the same place every day. It's a freight corridor as well as a transportation corridor for private vehicles. And they, uh, so they're looking at where to set that up, in the most advantageous places, easy to access, get on and off the highway. So that's been done. And we authorized a new agreement with the CHP to patrol on Highway ninety-six, thirty-six, and one sixty-nine. And what's interesting about those areas is, uh, HCOG, as operating as the Safe Service Authority for freeway, freeway emergencies, has installed satellite phones up there, but there's still areas that have no communication in between the phones. And on a reporting period, the public assists outnumber citations and that kind of thing by about three to one. So this provides a lot of service to the public, and it's a well-spent dollar from, uh, HCOG. And so that's what I have to report on that. Uh, last Friday, I went to the Redwood region of Cal Cities. We had a meeting in Lakeport, and the Redwood Division is what Fortuna is in, along with Eureka, Arcata, Del Norte, and then all the way down to Cloverdale. And so we met there, and we looked at a lot, at a lot of legislation and voted as a division what we were going to support, what we were going to oppose, what we would oppose unless amended, and got those things done. Had a nice, uh, report out from what they call Clerk, uh, which is the Clear Lake Environmental Response Center, I believe it's called. It's, it's not what I thought it was. They actually have developed and have a certified laboratory in their building to do BOD testing, biological oxygen demand testing for wastewater, and test, uh, the water systems, and do many other lab-related chores, shall we say. And they are certified by the state of California, and they do testing for local treatment plants. So it's a lot, a lot of things they got their hand in there. And then today, I was able to attend the penning for our new police chief interim, but he's still the police chief, uh, our new lieutenant, uh, new sergeants. And it was a great thing to see that being done because their parents, wife, girlfriend, but a significant other in their life in one of those categories was the one who did the penning. And it was interesting to hear the story. Someday, you'll have to ask, uh, Chief Everhart about his story of how he got into law enforcement. And that's all I have to report.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.